July 8, 2024. Does anybody here an echo?
Yes.
I do too. It's not, I don't have control of the volume though. So with that, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we start the meeting off with public audience, and I have three names on the list. Just a reminder, when you come up, state your name, state your address, and you have five minutes, and we will cut you off. So the first name I have here is Bob Hensley. Bob, if you want to come on up.
Thank you. My name is Bob Hensley. I live at 21 Cedar Hill Road in West Simsbury, Connecticut. I have served on this fine board, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I'll try to re-brief, although it's not exactly a personality trait. But I wish to express my concern about the decision that the Board of Selectmen made to commemorate the Pride Month. Of course, June is the month designated to celebrate contributions made by lesbian, gay, bisexual, transsexual, and queer individuals. And I think that's great. Our wonderful country, state, and town honor many groups, individuals, and organizations, and fly flags. And recently, flags flew at half-mast for a young man who was killed, a young officer who was killed. And this was just in the last few days. This is our way of expressing our, either our honor of that vision or celebration of an event. And so as people drive through town and they look and see the flags, it reminds them, hopefully, of those good things or of sad things that they want to be more conscious of. Many years ago, June was designated as L-G-T-Q for their accomplishments and contributions to our country, our state, and our town. Not one day, not a week, not two weeks, but an entire month. This is a significant period when you kind of stop for a moment and think that on D-Day, 4,400 Americans lost their lives in our defense and our independence. Pearl Harbor, there were 2,300 who died on the same, for the same goal and purpose. The World Trade Center, we lost 2,977 people. Juneteenth, honoring Black and Native accomplishments in our country and the world, is a one-day celebration. The Fourth of July is, for the most part, a one-day celebration. Each of these, we do not put up separate flags, to my knowledge, unless somebody does it at their own home. Flags are a unique and very special thing for cheering and for praising and honoring of all sorts. I have a flagpole at my home, and I must have 60 or 70 flags. Purvis knows this. And I change them all the time depending on what's going on, and especially if the Chiefs are playing. And I even fly flags on holidays. So I'm a flag guy. I'm very conscious of them. I'm very conscious of what people say when they put a flag on their house or their business. But for flags on municipal and government buildings, I think they carry a bit more scrutiny, it seems to me. The American flag represents all of us. We are all part of the United States of America. And other flags that may be flown are more difficult because they may or may not represent the entire community or how people feel. And how the people who pay the taxes and how the people feel in general is, I believe, the concern of this august body. And this brings me to the decision that the Board made and voted on to support to fly the flag representing this particular group for Pride Month for the entire month of June. I believe that was very presumptive. I believe it ignores the feelings of a great number of folks who maybe, for their own personal reasons, don't support that, or that flag or that cause.
It's less than a minute, Bob, just so you know. Just less than a minute, just so you know.
Okay, good, that's great. Is it time for that?
It's 30 seconds.
But you never know, because the focus, I believe, was on diversity, equality, and inclusion, and less on how people felt about it. I don't know, I wasn't here that night. So this is less about the nature of an organization represented by the flag and more about the determination of who makes the decision to fly or not fly a particular flag. So the flag holds an optical reflection of how the town feels and how the community feels. And in my opinion, as other communities had done, I believe you should, I'm suggesting that in the future, the flag of the United States of America would be the only flag that would fly over town hall.
Thank you, thank you. Oh wait, next up, we have Carol Carlson.
Hi there. I'm Carol Carlson, and I live at 65 Strack Bar Sway with my husband Jack. We lived in Simsbury for 41 years. Downsize a little bit ago to Strack Bar Sway. And I was a teacher in Simsbury Public Schools for 15 years, mostly at Henry James. We have two grown sons who have gone through Simsbury's schools. And our youngest son graduated Simsbury High School in 2008. And shortly after his first year of college, he came out to us as gay. And in the conversations that followed, he said a few things that struck a chord with us. He said, well, he said he had known or realized he was gay since he was in elementary school. And he's telling us this when he's in college, and we were always very close and very open and wondered why, you know, he's just telling this to us now. And he said that he knew that Simsbury High School was not a place where he could come out and feel comfortable. I mean, he didn't think Simsbury was a town where he could do that. He doesn't have any harsh feelings against Simsbury. He loves Simsbury. He's probably like a Simsbury cheerleader. Had wonderful experiences in all the schools, great teachers, great friends. But he just felt that Simsbury wasn't a place that he could come out. He went on to college at University of Vermont, and he eventually got a master's in middle-level education. And shortly after that, he was interviewing in South Burlington Public Schools up in Burlington, Vermont. South Burlington is a school district like Simsbury. Vocal parents, socio-economically like us, active parents. He thought it would be a great fit. He was interviewing as a sixth-grade middle-school science teacher. So the last question they asked him in the interview was, you know, where are you at school system? There's a lot of people who want to teach here. You're coming out as a person of teacher, and why should we hire you? And our son, with a very high IQ, told his story and said, well, I came from a school system very similar to South Burlington, but I grew up as a gay child. And I didn't think that I could come out as a gay child in my town or in my school. And I didn't have any role models or teachers or anyone who I really felt like who I could talk to. And I'd really like to be that middle-school teacher and that person who kids could feel comfortable talking to. Because middle school is one of these things really, really creep up. So he was offered the job. And when he took the job, the principal that first year asked if he would start a gay-straight alliance at the middle school, because they had one at their high school. And again, this is Vermont, and so they had one at their high school but not at their middle school. And our son kicked off and started and coordinated with someone else this gay-straight alliance at the school. He's going into his eighth year teaching as a middle-school teacher up in the grade school district of South Burlington, Vermont. He's the eighth year as his coordinator of gay-straight alliance, group has grown from six to eight students to 20. They've been invited to the state capitol to speak. They're kind of a model. And he's gotten a lot of feedback from parents and students over the years as to how important this group and how important he and his support has been to them. So a few years ago, I essentially started celebrating Pride Month. And I think it started with the grass water, but then, you know, the thing on the lawn, starting kicking off Pride Month at town hall and the raising of the Pride flag. My husband and I were thrilled, but we also go to these things and video it, and then, you know, send it off to our son. And his response is always like, yay, clap, clap, yay, Simsbury! You know, that's my Simsbury I love. He's so proud of it. So I would just say that we are very proud of how far Simsbury has come in the last 15-plus years since our son graduated, and specifically in the last four or five years. And having been a teacher in a middle school and having a son who does this, I just feel like it's not only, we're proud of Simsbury. It's not only that it's the public and people in town, but for young people, it sends a message. This is your town. We are open, we are welcoming, and we are accepting. And we love this town, and we feel like it's only needed better. So that's how we see it.
Thank you, and within your time limit. So thank you, Carol. Okay, and the last person we have on the list is Joan Cole.
Joan Cole, 26th December. The municipal fiscal year starts as of July 1, 2024. Now is the time to move forward and reevaluate many of the policies and budgets for the next year. The Board of Select should convene a Charter Revision Commission to review the charter to reflect the town manager's duties and responsibilities. All the boards and commissions should be judged on past performance, accomplishments, and value to the town. Those who poor performance should be eliminated for the start. People appointed to the Charter Revision Commission should have the ability to judge performance, review the organizational chart, make recommendations and changes if necessary. Appointed members should have a historical perspective of the town and an open mind. There should be a discussion of the first select role and the need for a monetary stipend. Others surrounding towns do not have a monetary stipend for their mayors. All expenses can be received by filling out an invoice to be reimbursed by the town. There should be a well-defined role of liaison to the boards and commissions. The Economic Development Commission meeting of December 2023 meant to reflect that Deputy Selectman Steve Antonio, liaison to the Economic Development Commission, was participating as an equal member of the commission by nominating the selection of each member to the executive positions. This should be reviewed for compliance of the charter. The Simsbury Reforming Arts Center will hire a new director. Mrs. Jimino has now accepted another position. The new director should be aware of the need of balancing concerns and other activities that bring many people to the Simsbury Meadows and the need to protect the town businesses from people parking in their designated spaces. This is a letter reflecting the views of the business community. When the town allows events that shift down the business on what should be a busy morning, you realize small businesses do not matter. Now, a single parking spot in our entire lot, from front and back, employees arriving 20 minutes late because they must drive trying to find a spot. Signs threatening to tow or ignore. Now I am watching customers leaving because they have no place to park. I have not hidden our struggles in the struggle to small business. This does nothing for the town. None of the 200 cars in my lot will come into my shop, eat their shop here, or anywhere else in town. None of our regular customers will be able to shop. These events do not help the town. Extra police brought in only days off to call controlled traffic. Lost business, this must stop, end quote. Signs are not enough to change behavior. The members of staff and the Board of Select should evaluate the gathering permits on traffic impact, designated parking spaces, and the impact on the business community. There should be discussion on the expenditures in the budget for the Board of Select and the Board of Education. There should be a zero-based budgeting, combined items evaluated, reduced. There should be a discussion on the deficit, on the deficit in the Simsbury Reformed Revenue Fund of $151,000 last year and a continual deficit yearly. There should be discussion on outsourcing the cost to a management company. Special education's a large expenditure escalating in cost yearly. There should be a discussion on regionalizing special education to lessen the impact on the tax payers. Teachers are not equipped to meet the mental, physical, and emotional needs of severely impaired students causing injuries to staff. As I posted on Twitter, @joancoel workplace injuries. The Board of Education should re-register the schools and places to graduate to junior high. I would like to report that I have a complaint against the Police Department Freedom of Information Commission for an undue delay of fulfilling requests for information violation of the Freedom of Information Act. The Police Department is asking for public input as part of their accreditation process. There are institutional failures in the Police Department that are not being addressed. There is a need to fulfill requests and reports that are tightly managed. Efficiencies and managements as described in the cert of selection's report should be addressed, and the formality of the Police Department leading to a confidence over the chief of all that should not be ignored. The zoning commission approved the site plan for Starbuck's and Chipotle Restaurants. The establishment submitted on June 2023 warrants a delay. The increase in taxes that everyone has received will have a devastating effect on economic development. Rents will be increased for businesses and apartments, making the businesses that are barely surviving go out of business, as have been recently reported. And all my comments we posted on Simsbury and Twitter at @joancoel. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Joan. Okay, is there anyone else here for public audience? Now, I do want to say, if you came for public audience and you don't want to sit for the whole meeting, we don't find it rude if you happen to leave. Just put that out there. So tonight, we have a presentation on the Comp and Classification Study from Gov HR. And I'm going to actually turn this over to Eric to lead this and introduce us to the people involved. I should have said Eric Gomes, or HR Director.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. And again, our, thank you again to the Board for their continued support of our compensation classification study. We do appreciate your support throughout this process. Going back, we began the recruitment for a firm to help us with this classification study back in November of last year. The firm that was selected was Gov HR. The process really began initiated starting in mid-February. And it really included four key phases, with the fifth being the final report that will be presented to the Board. Right now, we're in phase four. I'd like to introduce, I'm glad she's here. We weren't sure. We are having earlier technical difficulties. Rachel Skaggs from Gov HR. Rachel is a VP with Gov HR and also served as our project manager throughout the process. She's been with us since the beginning, and we really do thank her and Tom Fitzgerald for all the work throughout the process. Tonight, Rachel's going to provide us a detailed explanation in terms of how we got to where we are. Most of the phases completed with conversations both with staff, our leadership, including with our HR directors, with Mark, have been concluded. Now we're heading into the final phase, which is really getting the input from the Board in terms of what we do with what we've learned thus far. And the Board does have a very important role to play in this process, which Rachel's going to explain, which is, we really need to understand from the Board where you feel the town should be with regards to where we are within the overall market. We're going to explain what that market looks like. Okay? Rachel will also talk about the next steps, not only with regards to the study, but also more long-term in terms of what we need to do. Because the, once the comp study is completed, the work just really begins. Because now we're going to have to maintain this over time. And Rachel's going to explain how they support us and what we're going to need to do going forward. Okay? So with that, I know, Rachel, you are on timeframe. So thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Yes, I apologize, there's always technical issues. So if you have, if I'm breaking up or anything, let me know, and I'll shut my camera off. But if you can hear me, then we'll be good to go. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Yes, I'm going to get started. Oh, this has disabled. But while that's happening, I'll go ahead and just give a little background on myself. It's been a pleasure to work with the town over these last few months on this study. My primary goal, or my primary position at Gov HR is classification and compensation plans. So that's all I do. I enjoy the work that I do. And it's been a pleasure working with everyone and getting to know, you know, employees and staff and management team in Simsbury. Prior to working with Gov HR, I spent 10 years in local government management, all in Illinois, most recently as a city manager for the city of Princeton, Illinois, which is where I currently reside. So looking forward to talking with you this evening about kind of where we are. Like Eric said, we're at, you know, a good point, but there's still some work to be done. And I'll go over all of that. Okay, great, I can share my screen now. Okay, so kind of an outline of what I'll talk about. I'm going to go over the scope of work. And then I'm going to talk about the job evaluation process that we went through. That job evaluation really led to the proposed classification plan. That's kind of the internal equity piece. Then we did a compensation investment survey, and that data is going to help lead us to the proposed compensation plan. I'm going to touch on some recommendations for implementation of the compensation and compensation plan, along with some recommendations on next steps and the process from there. And then I'll focus on, once the plan is implemented, what the future administration of the system looks like. And then we'll have time for questions. So part of this project and the scope of work and what it entailed was kind of two parts. First, that job evaluation analysis and the job classification system. So, you know, we had some study preparation meetings. We had employee kickoff meetings. We determined comparable communities. We supplied employees with information regarding the plan and also with the job analysis questionnaire that they filled out. And then we completed the job evaluation analysis. And I'm going to talk about that a little more on the coming slides. Because it's really, a really important piece and a key piece of any process is that job evaluation. And the compensation and benefits analysis. And I'll talk about that a little bit more, too, how we surveyed those communities and the results that we received back. And then right now, we're kind of in the draft report stage. So we're making a presentation on the draft report. But like I said previously, there's still some work well due in terms of proposed pay ranges and things like that that I'll talk more about. And after we get your input and feedback, either tonight and in the coming weeks, we'll kind of update and finalize everything. And eventually, there'll be a final report. The second, or the next part of this process is also doing job description, review, and updates, which we have started. But we really wait until the classification piece is finalized because we use a lot of that information when we're updating the job descriptions. So that's kind of the next step as well. So as I mentioned, the job evaluation is really, in my opinion, is one of the most important and key pieces of a classification and compensation study. You know, we understand that positions are different in every community. You might have the same job title as someone in another community, but every town function's a little different. So understanding the positions in Simsbury and how the jobs should in the next year is so important. So we reviewed all positions using these nine job factors. And we use these to really establish internal equity. So we look at, you know, education, the years of required preparation and training needed to do the job. Work experience. Years of experience. I'm getting a notice that my internet is unstable. I'm just going to stop my camera for a second. Needed to perform the job. Decision-making and independent judgment. Responsibility for policy development. But that also includes implementation of policies and procedures, planning at work, contact with others. And when we look at contact, you know, we really look at all areas of contact. That can be internal contact, external with, you know, businesses, visitors, residents, different governing bodies, anything like that. Work of others, so how much supervision the position is, or how many people that position supervises. Working conditions, so physical demands and hazardous conditions. And then use of technology and specialized equipment. So every position is evaluated based on those nine job factors. So all employees filled out a job analysis questionnaire. Supervisors and department heads reviewed those questionnaires and provided feedback if they had any. They did not make changes to what the employees submitted. And then all of that came back to Gov HR. So we looked at the G-A-Q, the job description, and any additional notes that were provided. And then we had a virtual interview with at least one employee at each position. And the reason for those virtual interviews is to make sure we really understand the position and how it functions, all of the duties and responsibilities. So we just kind of verify and expand upon the information that the employee shared in the job analysis questionnaire. So after that was completed, we put together the classification plan, which was really developed, again, we were going to say that before, but based on internal equity, meaning how positions relate to one another in Simsbury. All the positions were split up within their employee or union groups. And then the classification plan was developed within those. So this slide is a lot of information, so I'll pull up kind of the individual tables. But you'll see there's a classification plan for each of these groups. So for instance, with the unaffiliated P Plan, the positions that were in there, there's nine grades. So all 20 positions fall within one of those nine grades. Within all these other groups, you can see there's a variety of different grades based on the positions and where their skill level fell within each of those grades. So I just listed here, you know, for instance, CSCA, Secretarial, Clerk, and Library. They, there's 19 positions in that group, and they all fell within grades two to five. CSCA Administrator and Professional have 20 positions, and they are in grades three to six, and so on. So every group has a little different number of positions and number of grades. But all of that is based on the skill level and the internal evaluation of the positions. So at the same time that we were kind of completing that job evaluation review, we were also looking, collecting information from the market and from comparable communities. So one of the first things that we did was establish schemes. So in Connecticut, we look at these eight criteria that are listed here, and then we assign a point value to each of those. The closer a community is to matching Simsbury for each of these criteria, the more points they're going to receive. So for instance, we take population. And then a community that's one and a half times larger or small color is going to receive a maximum of 15 points. If you go out two times or two and a half times, they're going to receive less points. So we do that for each of these eight criteria. And these eight criteria are really focused on looking at population proximity and then also a variety of different financial criteria, focusing on the town's ability to pay. So we want to look at communities that are comparable in terms of ability to pay. But on the flip side, we also have to take into consideration communities that you compared yourself to in the past. Maybe they're competitors in the marketplace. And maybe they're nearby in proximity. So they might not have the same financial criteria, but you know, they are close by and they, they are competitor. So here is the list of the comparable communities that received ninety or more points based on that analysis. However, we also added four additional, um, communities that did not score ninety points, but they, again, like I said, they've been used in the past, close in proximity, competitors in the marketplace and then are also used by the Board of Education. So you can see those, um, listed down at the bottom there. The communities with an asterisk next to them are the ones that responded to our request for salary and benefit data. You know, our goal obviously is always to have a hundred percent participation. That's not always the case, but we got a really good response rate and had a lot of good data to use in the analysis. So after we established those comparable communities, we put together, um, a salary and benefit survey. Within that survey, we define each position to make sure that we're gathering accurate data. Just like in the job evaluation piece, you know, positions might have a different job title in another town. So we wanna make sure we include those position descriptions. So when those communities are filling out the survey, they can say, oh, we don't have that position, but we do have a position that does it and this is what we call that. So we wanna collect as much accurate and relevant information as we can. Salary ranges are the preferred method to gather, gather salary data. And that's really because when you look at actual salaries, a variety of different factors can contribute to maybe a lower actual or a higher actual salary, depending on if it's someone new to the position, someone that's been there for a long time and so on. So we prefer to look at salary ranges, but we also gather information as it relates to actuals. All of the salary data that we have gathered is the current for the market because it's been gathered over the last, you know, four or so months, um, so it's all current as of now. And then we also gather data as it relates to benefits and I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. And then lastly, uh, WHR uses a tool, we partner with salary.com and use a tool called Comp Analyst so that we can pull in data for positions that were not included in the survey. We don't include all positions in the survey because as the survey link increases, the response rate decreases. So we use this Comp Analyst tool to help us gather some additional data and then it also incorporates data from the private sector to make sure you're really competitive overall within the market. So the parameters that we use, um, to gather that data with, um, we're kind of in metro area, looking at all industries with fifty to twenty million in revenue. So on table one, within the draft report, we show the market data at the fiftieth and seventieth percentile of the salary of the community surveyed or using that Comp Analyst data. It's important to note when, when I say the fiftieth, that really means, um, the median, right in the middle. Uh, so the fiftieth is kind of the middle of, you know, that means you're at market, right in the middle. When you look at a higher percentile for if, since the seventy fifth, that means you're twenty-five percent above the market. So, you know, a payer above the market. I'm gonna talk about this a little more later too, but overall, I think, looking, your ranges were very competitive at the fiftieth percentile, um, and in some cases even higher than the fiftieth. So we wanted to incorporate the seventy fifth too to see, to show you how those compare. Um, the next step in the process is to calculate the proposed pay ranges for each of the individual employee groups. And those have not been calculated yet, but will be shown as table two in the final report. Again, all of the compensation pay grades were established using a point spread in between each skill level. And then each, um, grade will have a proposed range based on the market data. So for instance, if you're looking at one of the plans and I can pull it up after I go through my slides, but if there's, you know, five positions in grade two, we rely heavily on the fact that positions that have the same skill level and scored similarly should be compensated similarly. So taking kind of average of that market data for grade two as an example and putting a proposed range for all of those positions in grade two based on an average of the market. Um, and then we'll make sure that we always recommend a consistent range spread. So every, um, grade A will have a consistent range spread that might be twenty percent, might be thirty, um, based on what we see in the market. And then we'll have a gradation between each grade. And that really means we'll make sure that there's, you know, um, a consistent gradation so you avoid any compression issues. We wanna make sure that, you know, between grade one and two is at least five percent difference and so on. So we'll, uh, once we put together the proposed pay plans at whatever percentile, you know, you choose, we'll make sure that we have consistent range spreads and consistent gradation. The other parts of this study, and we're still working on some of this, was looking at benefits. It's important to note too, though, we always look at base salary in terms of what we see in the market. So we look at that as, you know, what is the market data for the salary as a base salary? And then benefits are kind of on top of that. Then we look at, we look at health insurance, dental, vision, life insurance, deferred comp and so on. I kind of just put some brief notes next to each of these, um, to help you see where you were, I would say with health insurance. You know, there's a few things you were right, right at the average for and then a few things you were above average. Dental vision and life insurance, pretty much right at the average for all of those. Deferred compensation, a little bit below average from what we were seeing that was operated, provided by the comparable communities. And then paid time off, again, av- average for some, above average for others. Tuition reimbursement was very, pretty much consistent amongst the comparables. Student loan contributions were not offered by any comparables. And then we're still diving into more, um, questions as it relates to retirement options and what is, um, provided by the towns or versus the employees for those. So that will be finalized soon and be provided as well. So there's a couple of things, once the plan is finalized, that we always recommend and we'll work with you on implementation recommendations, but I just wanted to highlight some of these. So if we're seeing, you know, that there's certain salaries that are below the minimum of what we're recommending for a range, then we always recommend that those be brought to the minimum as soon as possible. Everyone else, or every position that falls within the proposed spread for a grade, we would just recommend that they're slotted into the new pay plan at their current pay rate. And then if it were to happen where someone was higher than the maximum that we're recommending for their pay range, we would never recommend a pay cut. We would work with the town on, you know, different options on how to deal with that, but they could remain there until the market catches up. A couple of best practices and things we've worked on with other clients when we look at implementation. So, and I mentioned this previously, but overall, your current pay ranges seem to be very competitive at the fiftieth percentile. So I think that's, you know, great and important to note, so they're either at or above market in most cases. When we work with our clients, we always start with the fiftieth percentile as a baseline to see where they fall. A majority of, over majority, about ninety percent of our clients actually choose just to be payers at the fiftieth percentile. They want to be at market, make sure their ranges are competitive with the market. Um, we do have some clients that choose to be above the market because they wanna be leaders in the market place. They also wanna make sure it can help with recruiting and retaining employees and, you know, use that as a benefit. So I think the biggest discussion and thing that you'll want to look at and provide guidance on is what percentile you want us to put the final, uh, proposed pay ranges and plan together at and what, what do you want that to look like? We kind of call this the pay velocity. So what do you see as the pay velocity for the town and what percentile do you want to choose? It's important to note that oftentimes with a plan like these and when you're using, when you have union groups involved, it's not gonna be implemented right away. You know, you should work on getting full implementation as soon as possible. Sometimes that can take two to three years. Um, you know, and the specific information as it relates to the union groups is provided as informational purposes and that can be used as the town needs with those negotiations. Um, specific implementation timelines will ultimately be established by the town. But sometimes we have clients that are like, you know, set a date like either at the start of the fiscal year or halfway through and what they want that implementation to look like. And then, um, overall, all implementation strategies will have a cost to implement and should be based on the town's overall financial ability to pay based on the cost to implement. So just a couple, four more things, as I mentioned, the next steps are really determining and establishing the pay percentile so that we can put together those pay plans for each, um, employee group. And then we'll also include within each pay plan and work on, uh, to include best practices and options. You know, if you want those to be open pay range or defined step increment plans or blended merit plans. You know, we'll see what the current system for each of those groups looks like and put together a plan that's, is most similar to the current structure. And then the final report will include those proposed pay plans for each group. Once the report is complete and finalized, one of the best things that I always say is, you know, we want this to be something you can use, um, for the next five to ten years. So you don't have to do a full study again for a while. And there's kind of two pieces or components though, that you have to look at annually to make sure that it stays up to date. On the classification side, it's important to review positions each year and respond to changes. So let's say maybe a position took on more responsibilities. We have provided, um, the town with the tools to look at that position and make sure it's still in the correct grade. They can rescore that position if they need to. Um, so you can create, adjust or abolish positions if needed. If you have a new position that's been created, you're able to score that and put it into the classification plan where it would fall based on the skill level. On the compensation side, we recommend, you know, you don't have to do a full survey, but a simple email to the group of comparable communities that we've established and ask them what their most recent increase has been or their upcoming increase. And, um, take an average of that and increase the proposed pay ranges by that average. So you wanna adjust the pay ranges based on that and then consider adjustments for employees if their classifications have changed and then also annual adjustments as they progress through the ranges. It's important to note that one of the benefits of, um, you know, going with WHR for these studies is that we provide this type of service free of charge for a year after the final plan has been implemented. But I say I'm always here for questions beyond that as well. So we wanna make sure it's a plan that you can use for many years. Okay, so that covers, uh, the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or dive into anything more a little deeper.
Be- be- oh, just, before you go on, it could, could, could you just review it, explain like the table to us because it's key?
Yes.
Um, cause we only just got that this morning, so it would just be helpful to understand the data a little bit. And then we can get your question.
Sorry. I will share my screen and go through that, the tables are gonna be the most confusing, but they have all the data in them. So let me reshare here. Okay, so looking at this table, um, we have the positions. So for every employee group, we show the position, we show the skill level. So that's kind of what I was referencing a lot during the presentation about, you know, evaluating each position and then each position falls within a skill level. So I only scroll down just a little. You know, positions up to two seventy are here and then you have the next seventy-five point spread. So positions that fell within two seventy-five and three fifty fall into this next grade, which is grade two. Positions that, um, scored three fifty-five to four thirty are here and so on, all the way up to grade nine. And that skill level is based on those nine job factors, um, and based on the position. Not the person in the position, but really focusing on what's required of that position, what's their decision-making, what's their policy development, things like that. So the grades are here that each of those positions fall in. And then you have the two, um, market data. So the fiftieth percentile market data, so this is based on all of the comparable communities that responded or that Comp Analyst data, the minimum and maximum ranges at the fiftieth percentile for each of these positions. And then the same at the seventy-fifth percentile. And then we show the town's current salary ranges here. So you can see how those compare to the market data. It's important to note, for instance, if you look at all of these positions in grade seven, um, those positions all scored between six seventy-five and seven fifty. Their market data, you know, is different, but we look at them focusing on internal equity first. They all scored similarly, so they should be compensated similarly. So we would take an average of the minimum and maximum market data and put together a proposed range for all of those positions. So every position in grade seven would have the same range, same with grade five, grade four and so on. So each group has those same counts. The only difference is if we had some job title recognition changes, you'll see those. Um, and then we also show the current grades for those, uh, union groups so you can see how those changed a little bit.
Is there a table that shows where our comp towns are in the, like, from fifty to seventy-five to a hundred? I think there's like a narrative on that, but is there a table that we can see that?
So this appendage, oh, sorry, go ahead. Okay, the appendix, um, I think it's C, shows all the detailed salary data. So you can see the towns that responded and their information. And then what we're pulling into those table ones is this fiftieth percentile or in the seventy-fifth percentile.
So we would match what's up there to the bottom is what you're saying? Like, like Glastonbury is in the fiftieth?
So table one, um, just pulled in this data. So we call it the comprehensive table. So instead of having to look at each of these detailed data sheets, for instance, for town clerk, on table one, it's gonna show, you know, the fiftieth percentile is eighty-one to one oh eight. The seventy-fifth percentile is eighty-seven to one nineteen. Um, so those are the, kind of the two, um, numbers that are pulled into table one. So for each of those, we're pulling in the fiftieth and seventy-fifth. And that's looking at all of this data from the comparable communities.
So Glastonbury, I'm just gonna pull Glastonbury out, their range, well, do you know what I'm asking or?
So, so what one is trying to, um, figure out is for any given community, would we be able to take the data down to, um, their specific ranges along with their percentages?
Um, so just looking at like an individual community, is that what you're asking?
Correct, it, you know, we have fifteen, uh, separate communities. Wouldn't we be able to see the data broken out for each of those communities with their actual, um, minimum maximums along with their overall fiftieth and seventy-fifth percentile? That is a, that is a composite for us in individual communities.
Like taking a town and saying what percentile they're at?
Yeah, like Windsor, they're in the eightieth percentile, say, for most salaries, right? So we know that they're an apt town to potentially hire people if they're paying more than us, right? For that job, but even as a whole, right? Cause we're just saying we're in the fiftieth, we're not saying, we do say later for each position, but overall, we're saying we're kind of in the fiftieth.
Well, I, I had some questions about the percentile there, we can get back to that. When we say that we're in fiftieth, can we see some of the unaffiliated positions are far above fiftieth? There's plenty of others that are far, I would consider far below. Uh, so I, um, I'm trying to figure out how we establish where we're in the fiftieth as a whole compensation process.
You had, Heather, did you have a question on that too?
Um, yes, I, well, my question is, um, you know, obviously there should be some sort of number that you can put to a full package, benefits and salary. Um, and how do we compare in that chart? Um, you know, obviously our vacation looked a bit higher than other communities. Um, a lot of the other areas with, um, health and dental, we kind of seem to be in the, um, in the middle range, uh, with the rest of the communities. But, you know, how do you look at that full package and evaluate that as a whole?
Yeah, that, that's a great question because that's kind of, I, I believe, our, our, one of our goals going into this, like for us, we're really interested in the, the, the compensation overall package, right? Like the classification is great to straighten everything out, make sure every, everything's equitable, but, um, to really say, what's the composite view of the, our benefits and salary combined compared to our comparative towns? And then, then we can adjust, right, potentially.
And in the ten percent of your clients who choose to be above, do they offset with maybe being lower in, in other benefits? Or, you know, what, how are, what are they doing there?
Yeah, great.
Yeah, so the, those are great questions. So we always focus heavily on base compensation first because benefits can, there's a lot of different factors. You know, if someone's like fully insured or self-funded or, you know, what their premium costs are compared, you know, we look at a percentage there. So we focus on base compensation first and then look at the aggregate for benefits. Um, mostly what we see in the public sector that, you know, most benefits are very competitive and similar. Obviously there are some differences and there's some things that, you know, you could maybe change to make them a little more competitive, but overall, they're pretty, um, they're pretty competitive. So I think focusing first on base compensation and seeing where, what percentile you wanna be at and how people fall within those ranges is the most important piece. And then looking at the benefits second. Because it's hard to take total compensation when you don't know exactly everyone, all of those comparable towns and what their, um, unique offerings are and what their plan types are and diving into those. So focusing first on the base compensation and making sure you're, where do you wanna be across the board for that? And then looking at benefits. I think two, oh, sorry, go ahead.
What we'd be working on is, if you mind, looking at the total compensation, the total comp. Of course, it's on the basis of that, but it's also, it's not, it's also the, um, bonuses. As far as it can take, all of us all have that, you know, so we, we will get to that point and at this process.
Okay.
And along, uh, the other question in terms of how do we gauge a position where we are before the market? Rachel, sorry, I'm not ju- jumping ahead here, but, um, what we'd, what we'd ask for is for each position, give us the percentages in terms of where we are position by position. Is this, um, particular position's minimum and maximum currently at fifty percentile, eight, fifth percentile? And that's gonna help us all to really understand where we are, not only for position, per position, also for the market. And along with that, um, we, we also need to start thinking for is, um, step profession expansion. That's one of the things we have to look at, if we have, uh, positions that are sitting twenty-two steps. Does that make sense? How marketable is that to someone who's coming in? So, um, those are the things that we'll be working on as, as part of the time frame. Sorry, Rachel, help I didn't speak there or I think that's, that's our goal?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think seeing the column with what percentile each position is, because I did make a general statement that overall, I think you're pretty competitive at the fiftieth percentile and some are over, but some might also be under, you know? So seeing that individually for each position. So seeing that individually for each position will be helpful as well. I also wanted to note that we never recommend a pay plan below the 50th percentile. So 50th percentile is really right in the middle at the market.
So my questions are, I noticed that the IPBO did not participate and was not part of this. How does that impact what, like, first of all, why, why was that not part of this? They did not participate. And, I mean, there may be a valid reason, but, you know, how do we know, are we within, as you negotiate union contracts and whatever, how do we know that we are within our comparable towns when we are trying to hire officers and whatnot for our force? Like, we want to make sure that we are within the range that we should be. And I know that their jobs may not be able to fall within certain classes, and so that may be why. It may be harder to put within your, your class numbers. But how do we know that we are being comparable? And I do have a second question, but you can answer that first.
Yeah, so I think at Eric's request, they didn't, they just didn't agree to complete the job evaluation process, but we still wanted all the market data pulled in.
Okay.
So they work for the classification system, but we still have all the prepared data pulled in.
Is there a reason why they didn't want to participate as part of the classification system? Okay.
I would just add that we were disappointed.
Okay, so I was just clarifying. So I, and I want to make sure I am understanding this. So for each, within each classification, you've got your, we have a current grade, which is what we are operating under. And then the next one is the grade that you, according to your classification, are going to regrade them at? Is that what I'm?
That's correct. That's based on our system. Sorry, go ahead, Eric. But that's our, with our points, we would say they fall in a grade three.
So somebody would be, like, I'm looking at some, our current grade 10, and, and it may be moved to a grade eight. For example, now, are you proposing that we put everybody in a grade eight within the same salary range? And in that, is that within each area or across the board? Does that make sense?
I think so. So like, for instance, if we're looking at these positions here, it's just within each employee group.
Okay, yep.
There is a group of positions that are calling in what we call grade four.
Right.
So our recommendation would be to have, they would have a similar pay range. They would have the same pay range because they all fell within the same skill level. We'll look at all of the market data for each of those positions and take an average of the minimum and maximum and create a proposed pay range for all of those positions.
Okay, so, so taking that CE, you know, the C, excuse me, CSEA admin professional in that group. So you would, that then, if we were in the 50th percentile market data, all those numbers would be the same for each one of those? Like, in the end, the goal is to have all of those, the numbers be the same range. They don't, they may not get actually the same pay, but the range would be the same for each one of those listed positions?
I was just going to say, if you look at the thing, the current salary ranges are pretty, pretty in tune for a lot of the same grade levels.
Yeah, I think there's other groups that they're not as consistent.
This example is it.
Yeah, this happens to be a more consistent example. But there are some that are not as consistent, so, okay. Just want to make sure I was understanding that correctly.
Yep, that's correct.
I just have, oh, sorry, I want to cut you off. Do you have a question?
Well, I was, I was just curious about clarification on, so where you have the asterisks on those positions, those are the ones that weren't included in the survey and you took data from public and private sector? Is that correct?
Correct. It's, yeah, through the comp analyst database. It includes public and private sector salary data.
Do they use CCM?
Oh, just curious, why private?
Yeah. But I was going to just say, do we, do they pull, do you pull from CCM, which is the Connecticut Council of Municipalities that does a lot of salary data? And you can actually go in and get it?
Um, we don't, but we could definitely look at adding that as a data source.
We do look at CCM's data. I think our whole CCM's data is something that long-term to rely more on our comparable towns and communities opposed to CCM. CCM's data is helpful, however, at times, it may not, it may not be so clear. So we do look at it under your, and we found it helpful in some instances and also helpful in others.
I would just add that where CCM is very helpful is looking at raises in GWIs across the state. But the salary ranges tend to be a little behind, there's a lag. And also, there isn't a close correlation between certain titles of positions. So one of the things Rachel's report focuses on is a number, say, six or seven, for example, recommended name changes for the position, you know, maintainer two and so forth. You'll see in your report to more closely align us with our peers, which would make it better to, and more reliable to rely on CCM. But at the moment, there's a, a little bit of a disconnect there. And then if I could, Rachel, it's Mark Nelson. If I, could you just, I saw something in the draft report that I wanted you to spend a minute on, and that is how this relates to new hires, right? I think, I've talked to a number of people in the organization, both in union positions and in unaffiliated. And I think there's, you know, kind of, and just my anecdotal from conversations, there's a tendency to look at this as it pertains to me, you know, in the position currently. And I know you've tried to stress in the report that this is about the position, not the incumbent. My question is, where do you start a new employee on the range? I wasn't quite clear where, I mean, if we're recruiting new employees, are your, you recommending we start at the lowest, at the, at the beginning of the range, right?
So normally, you would start, once the ranges are established, new hires would be brought in at the minimum. There are certain situations that we, we can talk about. Or, for instance, if we had an open range for any of these pay plans, there's flexibility to bring someone in if they are, you know, really qualified, have years of experience. If you're a particular position, you can bring them in above the minimum of the range. We typically recommend you don't go beyond the mid-point. So from the minimum up to the mid-range, it gives you some leeway to bring them in, you know, up to the mid-range with certain circumstances. But normally, the hiring rate would be the minimum of the range.
And so as a follow-up to that, and I know this gets a little complicated. We can talk about it offline if you prefer. But I think, you know, certainly with some union contracts I'm familiar with, if, if, let's say you've got a whole bunch of people that are, have scored essentially in that range and they're now, for the sake of this example, grade seven. And we want to hire a new employee that would typically be a, a grade seven. And we bring that new employee in based on their experience at a higher rate than, say, a handful of the grade sevens that we currently have. We might be contractually required to raise all the sevens. And this is, I think, you know, and you would be the expert on this, but this is why I think when you look at classification structures around the country, you tend to see a lot of grades, right? Not, not just 10 grades and you put all of your employees into 10 grades. But have you, have you looked at our, because I haven't. Have you looked at our contracts and discussed with Eric the impact on bringing somebody in above, say, step one or two? If they were new employees, whether that would have an effect on existing members of the same grade?
Yes, that's a good question. I haven't done the contract in a while. And part of the next steps of the plan of putting together the proposed ranges is, you know, if they have a current, like, step in front of the plan, what those steps look like. And then we make a recommendation on how many steps there could be from minimum to maximum. And another thing that will also discuss is, the town could consider a one-time kind of longevity adjustment when the plan is implemented, if they wanted. So that if you have people that have, you know, 10 or 12 or 15 years of service and they're falling towards the bottom of the range, that might say that they've been paid below market for some time. So you might want to make a one-time adjustment, ask to be, you know, across the board to bring people where they should be. And then that helps when you're bringing people in, you know, someone's not coming in and then making more than someone who maybe has been there for longer. So those are definitely strategies that we could talk about. And in certain positions, you know, the salary or the starting pay range might have to be the minimum, right? And that's okay, but there are reasons where you would be able to hire people above the minimum if needed to.
Great, thanks very much.
So I have another question. Take that, so we're going to keep on the slide that you're on. Looking at the bottom of the chart, right? And you could see that you have your 50th percentile market data and your 75th percentile market data and then our current salary range. Well, our current bottom, like, the lowest end of our salary range is higher than both minimums of the 50th and the 75th percentile range. But our high end of the salary is quite below our 50th and 75th percentile market data range. So assuming you adjust the higher end of that, how do you then determine where we would fall in? And those employees that are currently in those positions, if they're still within that acceptable pay range, do they get adjusted? Or do they maintain and then step their way up to the higher end as appropriate? Like, can you explain how that would work?
Yeah, so the latter for that sort of a question. So if they fall within, they don't get adjusted unless you choose to make a one-time longevity adjustment for everyone. If they're just within the range, they wouldn't get adjusted, but they might have to relax, maybe to grow right within their range because the range might change. It's important to note, too, though, we look at the gradation, which is the difference between one grade to the next. So we would take that in mind as well. So when you look at, you know, how the market data for grade four, we're going to consider that when looking at grade three as well and what the differences in each of those are, and kind of how that all comes together. But you're definitely correct. When you look at that, for the new grade three, your current minimum is higher than the minimum, but the range spread is much larger in the market, so the maximums are higher. So I would definitely probably without making any commitments, think that the maximums of the 50th would change a little bit so that employees would have room to grow within the range.
Thank you. So where are we? You got, you got our list of questions and concerns and for the next go around?
Yeah, definitely. So final, I think, you know, our plan is to put together the data that we discussed, you know, where each position is based on the current market percentile, putting together those proposed ranges. That will definitely be done within the next two to three weeks, maybe sooner, but I don't want to miss something too soon. But in the next two to three weeks, from there, we put together the final report, making sure we have all the benefit information in there, too. As I mentioned, we're still collecting data from, based on our retirement benefits. Then from there, once the final report is done with the proposed ranges, then all the implementation costs and then what that looks like comes after that. And again, implementation can take a lot longer after the final report. But we put the final report and the recommendations in there, and then the town works and, or obviously, their help on implementation over, you know, a year or so, making sure all those union groups and employees are adjusted to where they need to be within those ranges.
A lot of team system to support this.
Is it only 50th and 75th? Like, is there kind of a scale, like, we want to be above average, but we don't want to be 75th? Like, can we be 60th or 55th?
Yes.
And as far as guidance, first to give you guidance.
I have, I have another question also, because I'm just looking at the processing of the data. If you have a number that seems to be a bit of an outlier, that could adjust, that could skew your averages? So take the, that middle, you know, where it starts with the team services, right? So, you know, say this 50th percentile within those ranges, right? So you take the lower range at 60, right, to the 81. The 60 is an outlier, where it really does skew the average lower for that range than the others would combine, which are, i- if you're trying to classify them all within the same grade four. So what do you do with information, whether it's an outlier low and would skew things low or an outlier high, which could potentially skew things high? I'm particularly concerned about the skewing low, because that would, if you average those five numbers up, it absolutely skews it lower on the lower range. So what do you do with that?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, Jen. And that's why, you know, part of what we're doing right now, this work is because, so again, we'll look at gradation, too. So we keep in mind, you know, not only the range spread and the averages in the market, but the difference between one grade to the next based on, based on the market data. So we'll look at the average of that, but we're, we're looking at the individual averages as well. So like, like you said, you know, we would notice that in addition, like, if you look at grade six, there's, you know, a few that seem really high. it doesn't, but we look at it individually and collectively when putting together those ranges.
So I'm going to wrap up. If that's okay.
We can, we can ask questions still, right?
Today, you want to ask more questions? But then we should keep going.
When will we revisit?
Well, that's what I was going to wrap up with, unless I, it didn't seem like anybody had more questions if we do, or they're here.
I was just being polite. It's not common.
Oh, you're polite.
So for the questionnaires, other than the police, you mean, were 100% returned? It was otherwise 100% participation?
Yeah, I feel like we had, I don't want to say 100%, but I might have been. I can definitely let you know, we had really good response rate, really good participation. You know, every, I will say that, you could take the employee's willingness because it's, it's, you know, it's not easy when they can, you're talking about their, them and their position or their compensation, but everyone was really, you know, willing to participate in that, their response rate.
I'd be interested to know. What's?
Yeah, I can get you that.
After the, the responses go in, managers and department heads were able to comment on how the employees evaluated themselves, which is, which is really good. What, what did that look like? What were their reactions from there? You don't have to answer all this today, but these are some of the questions that I have, just as far as conforming that process. And from, from there, I'd be interested in what the disagreements, you know, sort of were or if there was any consistency in that. There's also in the charts, there's a couple of lines where there's blanks in the percentile data. And I understand in our current salary ranges, some of them are newer positions than that, but could you just talk to where, like, budget director is blank, management specialist is blank, and a couple other ones, like, you know, tax collector? These seem to be pretty common, miserable positions that, that I would have expected we would have had market data for.
Yeah. So, oh, I was, I was one of those positions for a start. So we didn't survey to begin for all positions because we tried to pick positions that are most common and representative of all the important classifications because as the survey increases, the response rate goes down. So those positions that you had mentioned, we don't have data from the variables and then they're also not available on comp analysis. So we don't have any data for them. What we do in those cases are go back to that comp evaluation, you know, how they scored a position, they scored similarly too, and use the other market data that's available for those positions in there. And then I, I would say overall, with, like, department headed supervisor feedback is really just specific to the job analysis questionnaire. So if they felt like a position had more policy development than the employees said they did, they would make the comment on that. But ultimately, the consultants that do the interview make the final determination on, you know, that employee's policy development or decision making based on their compensation through the interview process.
Thank you. In the classifications too, it wasn't clear to me whether or not the new grades were based on where the compensation bands were or if the responses to the job questionnaires were driving the classification in those, the grade numbers. Could you talk to that a little bit?
Yes, and definitely the job evaluation, the skill level that was assigned based on the job analysis questionnaire and the employee interviews are what drive the internal classification piece.
And then what I had mentioned at the top end, and I promise I'm done Monday, is the 50th, 50th percentile, I think, is a reasonable goal for us. And then maybe this is where there's certain rules that we feel like we need to go above, hiring and retaining excellent employees and compensating them well is certainly a preference of mine. But it does seem like there's a few positions that are clearly above, even the 75th percentile, and then several that are, that are below. And, you know, I did public school math, so don't make me do the math. But if you just check on that and help us make sure that you're booking us in the right percentiles when, so that we can make the best judgment.
Absolutely. And I think having the individual percentile in each position will help guide that too.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else have questions? I don't want to cut anybody off. So it seems like one of the key things to take away is the size of the range is really important here, like, the, the range is enough to accommodate that grade level. And then just a quick question, are there, when you're, it's a union position, are there steps within each grade level or is the grade level the grade level? So, so, yes. Okay. So you want the, the range to be enough so that a person can move up through their grade because they're going to be in that grade, right? And that's kind of the point pointing out, is range is making sure that they're expansive enough. The other thing that I just want to point out again is we're being asked to say where we want to be in a salary, which is the question that we had from the beginning, in a salary range, but we can't really make that determination. And that's what Eric's going to work on, to tell us where we are in the compensation range so that we can make that decision, you know, with a full set of information, which is the point of this project. And then going back to what Curtis asked, which is a really good question, and I think this is what you asked, Curtis, is that when, if we do start playing around with different percentiles, what is the impact to our budget? So we know if we can afford to make those kind of changes or not, right? So, so anyway, I'm, I think that's where I am. A couple of follow-ups. The personnel subcommittee will have time to ask some detailed questions, follow-up questions on this, which we meet on Thursday. Anybody's welcome to come at 8:30. If there are further questions, Mark and Eric are willing to entertain them, and I'm willing to put this back on the agenda in August if there's a lot of questions that we want to make and discuss again as a, as a group. Whether or not Rachel can make it or not, I'm hoping Eric could be here, Mark could be here, and Tom could show. So with that, I'm going to say, are we done here? And we can let Rachel go and Eric, if you're done. Good?
Thanks, Rachel.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay. Back to the, to the agenda. We have two people left here in public audience, or in the audience. So I'm going to do a quick first selectments report because we still have a few things to do tonight, and then we have an executive session. Oh, so no one's here, but we, we have a regular celebration of employees' years of service. And we had five people this month, quarter, and I'm going to just read their names, and none of them are here. If you'd like to stand for, no kidding. So we had Anthony Pizali, he's 10 years as a police officer. Brian Eldridge, 10 years as a building custodian. Derek Oberg, 15 years as the senior building maintainer. Mary Fletcher, 20 years as a library circulation assistant. And Trevor Britell, 10 years as our school resource officer. So congratulations to those. There's some nice tip, tip. I do want to acknowledge that I believe it's today is Mark's sixth month anniversary. You have more gray hairs now than you, than you started. Fewer hairs, more gray, whatever. And I just want to say that we are working on Mark's goals since the sixth month, Mark. We're trying to get those done so that when we get to an annual review, we'll have something to review Mark on, but we're happy to have you here, Mark. We had our first meeting with the SVAA regarding the new contract, and we'll be meeting again later this month to talk about that. The public safety chair is going to be attending the SVAA meeting, I believe it's this week. So that's part of the deal that we had with them. And the PAC MOU is also in progress, and that will be presented in the next couple months. We're also looking at some tax exemptions and senior, one related to farming and also related to seniors that will probably come up in the September timeframe. And with that, oh, and one more thing, our board of selectmen goals, Franklin is doing a great job to put it into more of a user-friendly readable format and get that out on the website. So we have a target for that in the next couple of weeks. So that should be out there, even though our goals are in an agenda, if people want to look for them. And the last thing I want to say is that if anybody comes to the board for public audience and has any complaints about members of our board, there's a board of ethics and you're free to go to the board of ethics and report any complaints and let that be investigated. We have had business owners on this board before and have been successful, so I just wanted to point that out. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I'll be brief. I know we've got a full agenda, and thanks again to Rachel for that report. A few things of note, and you all have my written report, which will also be posted online shortly. I've been asked to give you an update on the Town Hall elevator restoration project. Overall, it's been moving well. There have been a number of minor delays. Right now, the final completion date has been pushed back to mid and July. And Tom Roy and all involved in DPW and engineering thank all of the town employees and the public for their patience while we complete this project. We are in the final stages. Also, of course, working on the parking lot and the parking facility at Town Hall, and that is also moving very well. I want to take an opportunity to thank all of the employees that are working on that, our contractors, and also just a note to town employees to watch your emails over the coming days for updates on the final timeline and the need to not park at Town Hall for the final two weeks of this. Quickly want to join, ask you to join me in congratulating the assistant town clerk, our assistant town clerk, Colleen Fenn, on passing her town clerk certification exam. Congratulations, Colleen. This comprehensive exam is offered annually and does require attendees and participants to require a five-fold day of classes over a couple of years and many hours of study. Our town clerks department now has three certified town clerks as ATC Gen Espinol became certified last year. So great job, Colleen. Finally, I want to mention that Juneteenth saw over 1,200 individuals attend our fourth annual celebration organized by the DEI Council and hosted at Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center. And also want to thank our partner communities surrounding Simsbury that participated and make this truly extraordinary event. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn this over for selectmen liaison and subcommittee reports. I ask people to try to be a little brief tonight because we have a executive session, but I will start over on that side of the room with Kevin and Steve.
And Mark, I just missed you at the Juneteenth. You did an excellent staff job of making sure that you knew, that I knew that you were there, which was great. It's a good multi-talented event, and see somebody goes there. On the, your report here, the bear aware event is my committee assignment, but there were some good comments from the.
Good comments from the audience in attendance. I think it's a good thing that previous boards had passed the prohibition on intentional and unintentional feeding of wildlife. That's obviously something that the state has followed suit on as well, but there may be more things that we can do as a community in specifically addressing problem neighborhoods. We know that it's not necessarily every town, but there's corridors that bears pass through. I thought it was an excellent effort by our law enforcement and animal control officer in bringing together and convening this. There were definitely participants from other towns, and it impacts, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks. Thankfully, I have happy bears in my neighborhood right now, but I know that that's not the same for, for all, so that's all for me. Thank you.
In the spur of time, I have nothing to report.
Curtis?
I didn't, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but the zoning commission, they voted to require houses that but to other houses as you want to have, make an addition to your house. You now have to, are they proposing to, to require you to receive a letter saying that that? So basically, currently, you don't have to tell your neighbor if you're going to make an adjustment to your house. So now they're going to try and, try and put this through in September 5th. ISCC got approved for the 25,000 square foot, so that's going in the June 17th meeting. From the police commission, we have two officers that should graduate by the end of October. They're down five officers from being fully staffed. The RFP for the storage records office that we approved is, they're starting that process. They're going through accreditation. This is year three of four, the bear aware event, and the junior police, it's starting August 5th through 9th. Need information, it's on the website. These are for kids 10 to 13 years old.
Thank you. Diane?
A few things. SIMPAC, we are working in agreement. Things are going well. I don't have anything on board of ed. Public safety, they wanted to let us know a couple of things for hurricane season. They are expecting 17 to 25 name storms this season. They are working on election safety and voter safety, cybersecurity. They have mentioned a bear safety as well because at that time, and now it's increased, there were three incidents of in-home, bears in home, and there was one yesterday where a bear was in the basement. They're, so they are, they're very aware and they're working out. They did have a hiking rescue, so they want to make sure people are aware and be safe. And they, they have new cellular things up there so that you can tag yourself and, for hikers to be easily found if, if needed. The call volume for ambulances are in line with last year. Fire department is scheduling a replacement of an engine. Early bids are coming in too high, so they are looking to get more. Reminder that Chief Baldis is retiring as of January 1st. Public Works is working on tree trimming with Eversource, and they were currently in the Sand Hill Deep Park area. They did get some calls about aggressive tree trimming, but there were significant power supply lines being compromised there. And they are working on an intersection safety study redesign. And we also discussed the Comcast outage and better communication when we have Wi-Fi outages and addressing that need. Department of Public, the, sorry, Parks and Recs, summer activities are in full swing, and you can see there's some fun things on their calendar. A and D, a reminder, it's on the town manager report, but you are all invited, the board of selectmen and town employees invited to the Aging and Disability Commission Disability Picnic Ice Grading Rink, Simsbury Farms, July 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Delicious food will be there. It is free for you and for those families and individuals with disabilities that live in Simsbury. And the Fair Rent Commission has begun, and we had our, they had their first meeting and elected a chair and vice chair and secretary, and we have cases that are going to be coming down the pike fairly soon. That's it.
I do not have anything on my end.
Sorry, because I took all your stuff.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So for the consent agenda, I had marked a couple of things, but I'm told one is person would abstain. So that person can't just abstain from the whole consent agenda, can they?
Well, they can. No, they can't.
Okay. So I'm going to ask to approve for the consent agenda action items A, B, and C because they're all recurring, and appointments A and C. Somebody wants to?
So moved.
Make that motion?
I move that we move selectmen actions A, B, and C, and appointments and resignations A and C to the consent agenda.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, okay. Consent agenda, it is. Okay, so with that, we're moving into our two selectmen action items, and they're both appropriations. And, oh, I was here, but I don't know where he is now.
We, we are. We did.
Okay.
Come back!
Can we do, can we skip to the appointments right now?
You remotely turned on the air conditioning to the.
Oh, that was good, because I'm.
Like a runaway train for a little hot.
Okay, let me find the one. Okay, here it is. Let's, we're going to take care of the resignation from the, that's not the, yeah, resignation from an appointment to the zoning board of appeals. I'm looking for a motion to move retroactive to June 25th, 2024, to acknowledge the receipt of the resignation of Jonathan Yisley as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals, and to further move effective July 8, 2024, to appoint Jonathan Yisley as a regular member of the zoning board of appeals.
So one second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Aye. One.
Okay. Okay, so that passes. So now we're back. We're back, and so is Tom. Supplemental appro.
I'm all for you.
That what? There any food in there? For snacking? No, I'm kidding. Supplemental appropriation, the first one is the Public Works Wheel Loader. Very exciting. I'm going to let Tom just share the info on this one.
Sure, I was going to let you go through your knowledge of wheel loader.
I don't know what a wheel loader is, so I'm not going to.
Okay, you were out of touch truck and not, you know.
Oh, sorry.
You were pretty much ready, but long story, we bought this piece of equipment about two years ago. It used regularly in our construction activity. The crew was found out as we're rebuilding catch basin, which is a huge part of what the road crew do during the summer months, the lowest section of catch basin called the.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Aye. One.
Okay. Okay, so that passes. So now we're back. We're back, and so is Tom. Supplemental appro...
I'll argue.
Is that what? There any food in there for snacking? No, I'm kidding. Supplemental appropriation, the first one is the Public Works Wheel Loader, very exciting. I'm going to let Tom just share the info on this one.
Sure, I was going to let you go through your knowledge of a wheel loader.
I don't know what a wheel loader is, so I'm not going to.
Okay, you were out of touch truck, and you know...
Oh, sorry.
You were pretty much ready, but long and short, we bought this piece of equipment about two years ago. It's used regularly in our construction activity. The crew was found out as we're rebuilding catch basin, which is a huge part of what the road crew do during the summer months, the lowest section of catch basin called the soft is the heaviest part, and this particular piece of equipment struggles with it. It's able to do it, but it's not comfortable. In working with the dealer, Bobcat Connecticut, we buy a lot of equipment from them, they looked at modifying the equipment, whether we can somehow give you a little catch crumple for what the problem was in the hydraulics. Long and short of it, they didn't feel that it was performing the way they essentially sold us in the wood. They're offering us a newer model made by a different manufacturer, very good trade-in value, and then we also have an asphalt recycler. We bought about 10, 11 years ago, it has not been used about three years. So if we trade in the existing piece of equipment, this asphalt recycler that we no longer use on a regular basis, and $1,300, they will give us a newer machine which will essentially do what we need to do. But essentially, just making sure that we're transparent, we want to bring this to you, you know, we don't want to swap equipment and trade equipment without making sure it's done with level of transparency.
So, well done on being resourceful and working on the trailer. I just, my question is, so I'm assuming the new wheeled loader is, offers this accessory or what you need, that it will work more effectively, and I'm just curious what the life expectancy is of it?
Typically, a piece of equipment like this, we'd be looking at about 12 years, give or take. They can go longer than that, but we typically, that's the replacement cycle. So the existing piece of equipment would then replace roughly 10 years from now, so we'll have two more years with this existing piece of equipment.
I do have a question. Will we ever need an asphalt recycler? Because if we trade it in, we're not buying a new one.
That is a wonderful question. So, 10, 11 years ago, this was the cutting-edge of Public Works technology, the problem had been for years. My guys would go out and they would fill in pop hole during the winter with cold patch. They'd camp it down, and two or three days later, they'd be back filling in that exact same pop hole. It wouldn't last, it wouldn't stick, it wasn't liquid material, it was the best technology at the time. The asphalt recycler allowed us to take old asphalt that we excavated during the summer months, set it aside, put it in, it looks like a giant concrete mixer, burner on front, fires in heat, we put in liquid asphalt, it would essentially rejuvenate that old asphalt, and in the middle of winter, we'd be able to patch that same pop hole with hot asphalt that would last. And that was key. So we started to change our approach, and we would actually go out, instead of filling in that pop hole, we would cut it out, spend a little extra time and effort with this asphalt recycler, and put down hot asphalt. Unfortunately, or fortunately for us, the industry has changed, and now the asphalt plants are staying open year-round. So one day, we, on Wednesday, we can get hot asphalt in the winter, which is a lot easier to go up to grain and buy from the lasso than it is for us to put it in, load it in, how much asphalt, mix it up ourselves. And at the same time, we had received through a grant, a hot box for asphalt, which is essentially, it's the Yeti Cooler, what we construct. You dump in hot asphalt, it'll keep it hot all day. If you plug it in, it'll keep it hot for days.
Hot asphalt, mm.
Yeah, all you want to know about hot asphalt. And we have almost full-time use. We had one with shared grant, and we shared it for a whole field day of applying our own, because they were using it so frequently. So, again, we had this piece of equipment, cutting-edge, 10, 11 years ago, and we haven't used it for three years.
Okay. Then just the general question, how does this just, you just trade it in and you take, you take, where's the $1,379 come from?
When all the...
That's where you come in.
Yeah.
Do we come...
We have, we have money within our existing budget to make up.
Oh, it's your current operating funds, I'm sorry. I did read the, I was looking for a picture when they pointed out you had the description. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on this?
I get it, this is a great deal.
Good job.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just want to make sure, I brought up marketing, we want to make sure this was transparent, we were swapping around the...
Go on.
He's got the baseball cards.
That could have dropped us down.
All right, so, asking for a motion effective July 8th, 2024, to approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $86,379 for the early purchase of a wheeled loader, and to recommend the Board of Finance use current operating funds for the $1,379 net cost to the town.
So moved.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we get to the big supplemental appropriation. So this one is on the, it's for $629,000. So Tom, I will let you explain this and then follow up with questions from the Board.
Sure. We have a very good relationship with Aquarien Water. Aquarien Water that serves the majority of Simsbury with the public water, has for the last decade or so been working on replacing their old water. They're made out of pipe materials which have served their useful life and have attempted to fail. And they have plenty of sales to do certain numbers of sales. We work with them so that typical construction project for water, before we made this arrangement, would be they would go out and dig up Redstone Drive during, let's say, the summer of 2024. They would put down temporary patch, it would sit through winter, and any settlements that may occur due to that excavation would happen. They go back the following year, 2025, and you would have them not just repave their trenches to go to each house, but then where the main line went, gave about half a length, sometimes less. You would then end up with a new section of road, suddenly viable section. Just as we talked about the ability for the town to go up and buy our asphalt from the lasso, we can buy our asphalt through the state bid for a low price than Aquarien. So years ago, it came up the concept that instead of Aquarien paying their contractor that second year to go back and do the permanent pavement, they give us those funds, we take over that responsibility fixing that road. Most of the time, we have nearly enough from their simple patch to repave the entire road. So on years where they put in a new water main in the street that we were going to pave the year, we make up, we make up very well, because that offsets our costs. On other years where they perhaps put in a water main in the street that we weren't going to pave for another 12 years, we end up paving a little bit more than we would have, we're still getting the good value, but it doesn't add as much bang for our buck. And Amy can jump in and help you on this, but because this money is coming in as a revenue, it still has to be an appropriation so that we can expend the funds. So even though there's net, we're not actually asking for any additional $600,000, we're simply saying, you received this much money over the last year, and we're looking to have approval to expend that money.
Okay.
It's washed.
Well, I do have a question as, like, wouldn't this show, if we knew this was coming, would it have been easier or better to show in the budget, like, within the, you know, that we're getting 629 to, as a revenue to offset the cost to the town?
I mean, we could if we know it's coming, but...
We didn't know this, that's the question, because it's a lot, it's a big supplemental, right, to start the year.
Yeah, it's part of the time, you can ask Tom, but I don't know it's coming until it's made to cost.
Okay, okay. Because we've had a couple of these in the past.
Yeah, this has become almost an annual, like, we have, like I said, this ongoing relationship with them. Ideally, I think if we can set it up where we know the dollar value, it would be easier for me to do during the budget process, but this year, this ended up getting held out, and we just want to get this closed down since we're doing the other supplemental appropriation.
Would...
Do you use the amount of paving or the average that tends to take place each year through the Aquarien process as part of when we do our budget and we have the amount of miles that we are paving? Is that, is this inclusive of that, or is this a separate?
This is inclusive of that.
So how does that fall into, because we, this year, we took $100,000 off of paving. Is that affected by this number, or is that just still the same, and that's already included?
This is part of the reason why we're able to, this year, ease it back, that $100,000. But as I've said before, the challenge with paving is each number being pricing changes. When we buy our asphalt, even though it's good value through state contract, there's an asphalt price modification where whatever the price of liquid asphalt is in the unit each week sets the exact cost of the increase. So some years we're at $74,000, other years, like last year, we're at $95,000, which is a significant increase in cost. These extra funds here and there help us balance that, and the paving, unfortunately, is not as precise as I would like it to be. I'd love to tell you that, you know, we're going to do 10, 10 miles this year, I know exactly what 10 miles we're going to do, but I can't tell you exactly how much it's going to cost, just because of that asphalt modification factors, and also there's slight variations in the width of the roadway, and we were very careful when we put down the thickness, but a slight difference in thickness adds more costing content, or reduces the cost of product.
Thank you.
It's like butter on toast, right?
Lightly buttered or heavily buttered?
Yes. The, the work that Aquarien's doing for its water lines is not necessarily always the areas where you're going to want to do your paving, though, based on the condition of the road, though, right?
That's exactly right. We have regular contact with them, we have actually a meeting scheduled with them next week to kind of essentially wrestle and convince them that some of the streets that we see as more important are maybe the streets that they want, and the streets that we paved three years ago are essentially a dead end for us. We never want to have a street that was recently paved dug up, just because even if they pay us the full price, it's the location, it's the waste of taxpayer dollars, it's not...
So I did ask you this, I did call Mark today to ask a couple of questions. So this money that we get, it makes us pretty much whole, it's not like extra money.
Exactly.
That was one thing that I wanted to verify. And just for my own benefit, if this were to show in the budget, Amy or Tom, would this be, like, would it show as revenue under the capital request where we do the paving budget item? Is that, what is...
We would increase the paving budget and then increase...
And show a revenue coming from Eversource, so that would be, okay. Okay, that's the other question.
So it would be, when you say we would increase, then, the paving cost outside of what is in our current budget to match that? So it's not currently in our budget inclusive?
Um, I don't know, I don't follow the budget number, but...
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't remember how early on you coordinate with Aquarien.
Yeah, no, we coordinate early, but like I said, it's not locked until close to the end. And the other thing we've been very direct with is if the number that they're coming up with is not sufficient, we'll walk away.
Okay.
We're not going to take it back either.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to be held in the bag with this.
Okay.
But if you look at the CIP item, and you could envision that that money is included in your costs and your expenditures, you're being made whole by the revenue from them?
Right, and I think it's something that we can put in the budget, the only thing we would have to do is understand that the number we're putting in is November, maybe in estimate. So maybe if we're going to put in for this, if we get $700,000, it's...
Okay.
And Wendy, if I could, I just, me personally, I wouldn't recommend putting it into the budget. I like the way it's done now. If you put it in the budget, then the budget, year over year, actuals are going to reflect Aquarien's business plans, not ours. And in a year where they're digging up half the town, the number's higher, and in the next year, it's lower. I want to congratulate Tom on this, and Amy and everybody else who had a part of it, because it's obviously been going on here for a few years. It's a win-win for the town. We did it in Poughkeepsie with Central Hudson, that was digging up half the city to replace the gas lines, and the strategic relationship that you can have with your utility, quite apart from the pass-through of this money, if you really drill down, it saves us money as well, so it's pretty cool. I like it.
I'm only, I'm hearing the board of buying this in my head as far as the supplemental appropriations getting to a level, so starting out with 600 in July. I don't, we don't know what's coming, hopefully not 3, whatever.
Right.
3 million plus dollars, right?
Yeah.
The other nice advantage of this is because this is a benefit to Aquarien, they're able to close out, we see general investments in their silverware. I believe that both of these things go around and affect the Simsbury Council.
One thing that I realized I wasn't clear on, was this 629 for work already completed, or is this work that they anticipate?
That was the one already completed. It was the Spatial Streeware, they have to be repaired, and it was on the Clifton Drive, which is a pretty substantial amount of paper.
Yeah, I never clifted this. Great, thanks, Tom.
This might be for Mark. Do we have this relationship with any other of our utility companies?
I don't know, I'll defer to Tom on that. If we don't, we'll look into it.
Nick Moore, Tom.
Right.
I don't know who else is digging up the road.
We have the gas company disease, it's been a bit of a hassle, we're making a very good relationship with Eversource. We're going to go off on a couple of... But certainly, I will be happy to have that. The utility fund is not so...
All right, so now we can get to the motion. Motion effective July 8th, 2024, to approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $629,013 for use in the town's pavement management program, and to recommend this to the Board of Finance.
Open that motion.
And second, anybody?
I'll second.
Go ahead. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now we have three sets of minutes tonight. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of April 18th, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll ask for a motion for the minutes of May 13th, 2024, regular meeting, which were amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.